It is now five o'clock, January seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City's Housing Assets Successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez.
Present.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda per Government Code Section 549-54.3. State law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I don't see anyone in the audience that wants to address the Council. Therefore, I will request declaration of closed session items by City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We actually have eleven items listed, although six of them are somewhat related. Items A through D are on behalf of the City Council. Item A is real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. The negotiating parties and the property are set forth on the agenda. Items B and C are both pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1 on behalf of the City Council. The litigation name, case names, and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Those are also related to items G, H, I, and J on behalf of the Airport Authority, which is also pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1. And again, the case names and the case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Item D is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2 and pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9, sorry, 549-56.9E3. The facts and circumstances related to that litigation are set forth on the agenda. Item E is real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. This, along with item F, are on behalf of the Airport Authority. The real property and the negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. Item F is also real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. And again, the negotiating parties and parcels are set forth on the agenda. And lastly, item K on behalf of the Victorville Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency is real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. And once more, the negotiating parties and the property is set forth on the agenda.
Thank you.
To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular session at six o'clock.
Thank you. We will recess to our closed session. We will return for our regular session at campaign.
Heard a click.
Testing, testing. Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
They're not working, I'm yelling. Today is January seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen, and it is now six oh six. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City's Housing Assets Successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here. May we have closed session announcements by our City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had eleven items on the agenda this evening, however, six of those items were somewhat related. For the City Council, item A was real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. The real property and the parties negotiating are set forth on the agenda. Items B and C are actually all related to items G, H, I, and J, which is all pending litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D1. And the case names and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Item D was anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2. And the information related to that anticipated litigation is set forth on the agenda. Items E and F on behalf of the Airport Authority were real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. And again, the parties to the negotiations and the properties are set forth on the agenda. And lastly, item K was also real property negotiations on behalf of the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency pursuant to Government Code 549-56.8. The parties and the properties are set forth on the agenda. At this time, there is no reportable action with respect to any of those items.
Thank you. Now, we have, the invocation will be delivered by Pastor Davis, the First Christian Church. And after that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Police Chief Sam Lucia. Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. After teaching his followers the Lord's Prayer in Luke Chapter eleven, teaching them to honor His name and to come to Him as Father, he said this, "I say to you, ask and it will be given to you; seek and you shall find; knock and the door will be opened to you." So, to start tonight, we're going to do some asking, some seeking, and some knocking. Would you pray with me? We come to you, Heavenly Father, thanking you for the privilege of prayer. Thank you, Lord Jesus, for teaching us to come to you as Father, to come to you as our Creator, to come to you as Lord, asking for your mercy, Lord, asking for your guidance, asking for your wisdom. And I thank you, Lord, for the humility of this City Council, wanting to continue this tradition, oh Lord, that's carried on for many years in this city, to begin these meetings by seeking that guidance and wisdom that only you can give. Lord, there's many decisions to be made tonight, much discussion to take place, so we pray that you would be in this room guiding these proceedings. We thank you for our mayor. We thank you for each of these City Council members. We thank you for our city manager, for our city attorney, and all of the employees of this great city of Victorville. Thank you, Lord, for bringing us to this place for such a time as this. Move and guide and direct according to your perfect will, and may we humbly follow your guidance. And it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Place the American flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please present the agenda to the Council and any revisions or additions, please?
Yes, Mayor Garcia. Persons who wish to address the Council on a specific agenda item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the Council Chamber's lobby and give it to the City Clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 549-54.3, state law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the Council, and there are two revisions for tonight's agenda. The first one is more of a correction on closed session item number A. The APN number is incorrect as it's listed on the agenda, and the record will be corrected to reflect the correct APN number, three zero nine zero dash five seven one dash one four. The other item is concerning item number D eight. There is a memo that has been provided from Mayor Pro Tim Cox to the rest of the City Council in conjunction with that item, and those are the only revisions I have.
Thank you. This evening, we have an appeal hearing. That's item A one. I'm sorry, I skipped over the special presentation. We have a special presentation by Police Chief Sam Lucia.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of the City Council and staff. As you all know, that I've had the privilege of serving the city as your police chief for the last four years, but the time has come to move on to other jobs. And I've been transferred by the sheriff down to our headquarters division where I'll be running the Employee Resources Division. And tonight, I want to take a moment just to thank the Council for the support you've given us over at the Police Department. We've got a lot done in the last four years, and it's because of your support that that was able to be done. And I'd like to introduce Captain John Schuler, who will be your new police captain, beginning Friday night at midnight.
Thanks. Sam, don't forget, that's midnight Friday. So anyway, my name is John Schuler. I'm a captain with the Sheriff's Department currently. I live in the high desert, the wife and two kids. One of my sons has moved out, and the other one is going to move out soon, he just doesn't know it. I've lived here since nineteen ninety-one in the desert. I started my career with the Sheriff's Department in nineteen eighty-eight, and I've loved every day of it. In my twenty-eight-year career, I've had twelve different assignments. Some of my most recent management assignments have been criminal intelligence, communications, and most recently, I'm assigned to the High Desert Detention Center. When I got the call from the sheriff telling me he wanted me to come here to Victorville City, I was very pleased. I worked here in two thousand and seven to two thousand and nine as a sergeant. I worked patrol, I worked traffic, the Met Team handling various duties in the city. So, very excited to be here, and I'm sure it's going to be a smooth transition with the help of Captain Lucia. And Sam, I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I don't know if this is the right time or not, but I'd like for us all to acknowledge four years of absolutely marvelous service by Sam Lucia.
Most definitely, we thank you very much for all the service and everything that you have provided, and you have always been so kind and understanding. Thank you. Okay, now, I think I'm on the right track. We're on appeal hearings. And we have item A one. The appellant, First Assembly of God, an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve case number PLN sixteen dash zero 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 two one and associated case number PLN fifteen dash zero 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 seventeen. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation would be that at the close of the appeal hearing, the City Council consider the applications submitted by the appellant and either deny the appeal, thereby affirming the decision of the Planning Commission to approve the site plan conditional use permits for fuel dispensing and beer wine sales and associated parcel map by adopting affirming resolution numbers seventeen dash zero zero one, seventeen dash zero zero two, seventeen dash zero zero three, and seventeen dash zero zero four, or grant the appeal and reverse the decision of the Planning Commission to approve the site plan conditional use permits for fuel dispensing and beer wine sales and associated parcel map by adopting reversing resolution numbers seventeen dash zero zero one, seventeen dash zero zero two, seventeen dash zero zero three, and seventeen dash zero zero four.
Thank you. At this time, I open the appeals hearing, and I do have some cards. I will call out the first one. John C. Martin, come up. And after him will be Steve Wilde.
Good evening, City Council members. Mayor, thank you for your time. I serve as the lead pastor at First Assembly of God Church and the superintendent of schools for Victor Valley Christian School. And I stand before you tonight as one who is concerned with the approval of a conditional use permit allowing the sale of alcoholic beverages in discussion on this particular appeal. The church, just so you know, on the corner of Niskualee and Balsam Road, has been in existence for a number of decades now, and we service our community with thirty-three-hundred people as a part of our church on a Sunday morning attendance. About seven thousand people call our church their church home. We have Victor Valley Christian School and preschool. Preschool has been a vital part of the ministry of our church, as well as the school itself. Victor Valley Christian School has approximately three hundred and sixty students in enrollment this year. We have a youth group that we have on campus on Wednesday nights of two hundred and fifty students, and we are concerned about the decision of the Planning Commission. And I'd like to read the California Code twenty-three seven eighty-nine. It's the Business and Professional Code of Conduct, and in sections A and B, it reads this way. It says, "The department is specifically authorized to refuse the issuance, other than the renewal or ownership transfer of any retail license for premises located within the immediate vicinity of churches and hospitals." And section B goes on to say that "the department is specifically authorized to refuse the issuance, other than renewal or ownership transfer of any retail license for premises located within a six-hundred-foot radius of schools, public playgrounds, nonprofit youth facilities, including but not limited to facilities serving Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Campfire Girls. This distance shall be measured pursuant to the rules of the department." As you may know, we are within three hundred feet, half of that distance, of the appeal that's in process here tonight. We also own property, as you may know, on the other side, on the east side of Balsam, that is directly adjacent to the property in consideration this evening. And we had the opportunity to put a gas station in ourselves. We chose not to do so because of some very specific issues that are in front of us, one of which has to do with loitering, which is known throughout, well, the United States, that loitering takes place around gas stations. And so, we're concerned about the loitering that happens. We're concerned about the safety of our students. And when California issues a code that says for businesses and for professions not having alcohol sale within eight hundred feet, we would ask for your consideration to uphold that.
Six hundred or eight hundred?
Six hundred feet. Six hundred feet, yes, is what the code says. We're three hundred feet away from that, within that realm. In addition to that, the front door of our church and our school is really facing eastbound. So, when, as you can imagine, parents are dropping off their kids at school, we have a traffic circle that takes place every morning and every afternoon where these parents are dropping their kids off, students come in, those who are old enough to drive to school, they're doing the same kind of thing. So, the front door and the greatest impact to us is eastbound. So, we have a huge concern as to safety and what's happening around the issuance of alcohol. You may have heard from the possibility of granting this, that the sale of alcohol is a small portion of the overall business, and yet, in the Planning Commission meeting, the statement or the question was specifically asked, would you continue to pursue this if you didn't have the alcohol license? And they said, no. So, obviously, the sale of alcohol is very key with this. I'll go on to say that as a church and one that's been situated in the community in this location for, obviously, a number of years now, that we are not against the ongoing growth of the community. We want the community to grow. We understand that businesses need to thrive and for the community, for Victorville, to continue and move forward. We also understand that our location is a unique one with now numbers of areas of properties that are available, and we certainly understand that businesses will be going in all the way around us. In fact, if you've driven by recently, you will see a sign that says future site of a Shell station on the southwest corner of Niskualee and Mariposa. The impact of that gas station is significantly less to us than the impact of the gas station that is in discussion tonight. And we, as a church, would take a stance of knowing that because of the on-ramp and off-ramp that's going on there, and the need to supply gas stations in the area, we understand some of those needs, that we would hope that you would favor a limited number of gas stations that would go in the area. We know that particularly for this particular gas station and everything that it brings to it next to the apartment complex and other neighbors, we have a huge concern. It's the safety, ongoing safety that's going on. We have had a number of things happen since the on-ramp and off-ramp have gone in, stolen cars out of our parking lot, break-ins, other types of things. We have increased surveillance. We now have personnel on our premises twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, to provide additional security and help to our building. So, we are, we're concerned about what's going to happen in this area, and we'd just make that appeal to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Steve Wilde. And after him will be John Erbrocht.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm representing the applicant in this case. I'll give you a brief overview of why this is not just an ordinary gas station. In fact, it's really an exciting new concept that incorporates true upscale neighborhood market with gasoline sales. The building on this property is going to be several times larger than you see from a typical convenience store. It'll be about seventy-five hundred square feet. The store will feature such items as a Fat Burger Express, Thrifty Ice Cream Counter, Buffalo Wings, fresh deli sandwiches, and organic coffee bar. Typical grocery items such as fresh produce will also be provided along with some table service. Our location is important because the market will serve the surrounding residential neighborhood that currently lacks such amenities. The proposed store would operate twenty-four hours a day, with alcohol limited to the hours between six AM and two AM, which is required by state law. There will be no single sales of individual alcohol consumption, nor will there be any allowed on the premises. I note that the planning depart, excuse me, the Police Department has reviewed this application and is recommending approval of it. And consistent with that, we will be providing three hundred and sixty-degree video surveillance both inside the store and outside of the store. In terms of an economic impact to the community, we believe that the gasoline sales and the market sales will support the equivalent of more than twenty full-time positions and generate upwards of twenty-five million dollars a year in taxable sales. This concept has already been implemented in several locations throughout Southern California, or is in the permitting stage. They include Chino, Palm Springs, Temecula, Hesperia, and Apple Valley. The staff notes that there is a need for a fuel dispensing facility in the immediate area due to the lack of a similar facility within one mile of this location. We understand that the City Council did recently approve a number of standards for regulating alcohol consumption, and this project meets all of those standards. We concur with the recommendations of the Planning Commission and all of the conditions of approval. That would conclude my comments at this point.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I don't know if I pronounced your last name correctly.
Josh Erbrocht. So, that's close. Well, again, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and I want to say a special thank you to the Victorville City staff. They've been very helpful in this process. I know Bill is, I was going to be here, but he's not here tonight, so I want to say thank you to him. I serve as a pastor at First Assembly of God, also as a parent of three students who attend Victor Valley Christian School, so I am very much personally involved beyond just it being a sense of my job. I'm concerned about this location of a convenience store that would sell alcohol near our church and our school. I'm asking that you would please give us, or grant us the appeal tonight and not allow this conditional use permit to go through. As has been said already, we have over three hundred and fifty students that are involved in our school on a daily basis, over two hundred and fifty youth during the week. We have numerous events throughout the year where we provide for our community, such as Easter egg hunts, harvest parties, that have thousands and thousands of children that are on our campus. And we're very concerned about an environment that would create with having a place in this magnitude that would be selling alcohol. As has been said already, we're very concerned about safety. It's probably, again, my biggest concern. We have had new night watchmen have come on board. We've had to hire that, new gates around the church and the school. Again, things have been stolen, things have been happening. So, I know that the city police have written a letter that says we're not in a high crime area, but just as a parent and as a person involved with that, we see greater instances of crime now, especially since the freeway has gone in. I think that this organization, this convenience store, would only enhance that, and I'm concerned about what that will impact in our area. And I understand that we live on this new freeway and that a station may need to go in, but I'm just asking that one could be not placed in this spot. Again, as where we look, we have playgrounds, we have fields that are right there, right next to this, and it could be another place that it may be better suited near the freeway. And again, as the state of California states, that there shouldn't even be something considered within six hundred feet, and we are right there, we're inside that, so perplexes me that this evening on consideration, and that should not be, I should stop it right there. So, again, I'm asking you to please oppose this, and again, as a parent of three kids that attend our school, and as a pastor, and we see the effects in our community, that you would please grant our appeal tonight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have William Burkhoff, and after him will be Clayton Moore.
I'm not talking about this specific item. I'm actually talking about the fire issue. Did you want me to wait till you guys pull that agenda item up?
You're right, it's D6.
Okay, can I still go?
I'll call you up when we come to it. Those were all the cards that I had. Is... You did? What's your name? Sorry, I had two stuck together here. Mark Taylor, and then Matt Montez is first, and then Mark Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilman. I'm having a hard time breathing, so please bear with me. I'm a retired code enforcement officer with the City of Ontario, California. I'm also a 24-year veteran as a broker with the State of California in real estate. I've owned several offices in Ontario and have worked in the high desert. I'm a resident of Victorville. I've lived here for over 15 years, started off in the jewel of the desert here in Spring Valley Lake. But this gas station that's asking for the Planning Commission to get a conditional use permit, within the church area, there's already about 16 gas stations in a five-mile radius. One more gas station is something we don't need. As a code enforcement officer, I've seen that they draw a lot of homeless, we can call them derelicts, whatever it is, panhandlers. They're at the various stations, at Costco, the Shell, and La Paz, at the corner of La Paz and Roy Rogers, where the cross street from McDonald's, they like to congregate in the back, set up a shop. It's a terrible situation we have in the city. What we need is a homeless shelter to help these people that are in distress. But again, another gas station, as a resident of Victorville, I see that the land could be used for better. Brings a lot of blight, a lot of times, a lot of trash and debris, has graffiti, just causes more services to be used by the city we could use someplace else. So I just wanted to express my opinion as a resident and a member of First Assembly of God. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, staff, I want to thank you for your service. I'm aware that serving the public can sometimes be a source of aggravation, and what you do is not easy. Also recognizing I may become one of those sources, I'll hurry up with my speech here. But in approving another alcohol license within Census Track 100.25, we believe that the Planning Commission acted arbitrarily without concern for the conditions and the provisions afforded them to deny applicants' request for a license for off-sale alcohol. Because the Alcohol Beverage Commission has already deemed Census Track 100.25 to be overpopulated, overly concentrated with off-sale alcohol license, the Planning Commission is then required to find the applicant's proposal to sell alcohol at this site to be what you probably know as PCN, Public Convenience or Necessity. And we believe the facts do not support this finding. Simply put, we feel they missed this one. I suggest this council only needs to ask one question tonight, and that question is why. At the Planning Commission meeting, much like here tonight, there was a room full of people, and many of them came to this microphone to state their position opposed to the applicant's proposal. Not to mention over 100 letters that the Planning Commission received, and I'm sure you've been provided. Yet, no one, no one, aside from the applicant, has stepped to this microphone in support of this project. If the people, your voting constituency, are not rising up to approve this, why did the commission approve this? Why authorize the sale of alcohol in a zone and a census tract that already exceeds that authorized by the ABC? They recommend five based upon the population within that zone, and there's already six. This approval will make seven. There are currently 86 licenses that have been granted by the Victorville Planning Commission to sell alcohol. We're nearing our limit. In 2012, St. Mary's Medical Center completed a community health report and discovered, this was four years ago, that nearly 60% of high desert residents live in an area that has undue concentration of alcohol retailers, 60%. Isn't it time we start paying attention to the numbers? Why approve the sale of alcohol some 371 feet from a church when the ABC gives the Planning Commission authority to deny such application when the sale of alcohol is proposed within 600 feet of a church? I will not take the time to recite that code. You've heard it already. Why approve the sale of alcohol some 400 feet from a school? Same provision. Why authorize the sale of alcohol some 500 feet from a playground? Same provision. Why approve the sale of alcohol at a location otherwise surrounded by dwellings, none of which have stepped forward in support or in favor of doing so? The sound of their silence should be deafening to the Planning Commission and to this council. Why authorize the sale of another alcohol outlet in a census tract that is already overpopulated when you know that 1,300 feet away, design is already in progress for yet another fueling station that will sell alcohol? That will bring us to eight in this zone. Now we've reached the 60% that St. Mary's referred to. Approval of this application simply overpopulates. This council worked hard in 2014 in a workshop similar to the one that you had last week. In the fall of 2014, the first item on your workshop agenda read as follows, and this is a quote, "Limit the number of small alcohol retailers within over-concentrated census tracts." Why are we here tonight? Over two years ago, you recognized a problem with liquor. We understand it. It was the mom-and-pop liquor stores that you were trying to close the doors on, that you successfully did so, and it was a good thing. What are we gonna do? Turn it over now to beer and wine? If there ever was rationalization to deny the sale of alcohol, it's this one. With the justification and jurisdictional duty that this body has, if you don't deny this one, that leads me to a win question, and that is, when would you ever deny one? I urge this council to reconsider the Planning Commission's decision. They're appointed by you. They work for you. Help them get on the right side of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last card that I had, correct? Is there one more? Maggie Martin?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm finding it interesting to hear all these people speak in opposition to the liquor store thing. I think the gentleman who spoke about it from the church standpoint of it being less than 600 feet away of the school, pretty much said it all. What more needs to be said? If that's the law, then you're compelled to comply. It's really that simple. Me personally, I've lived in Victorville coming up on 19 years in April, and in the last 10 years, all I've seen is gas station after gas station after liquor store after liquor store. And there was a gentleman who spoke and said something about there's not a gas station within one mile of the proposed site. And I'm sitting over there thinking, who cares? Just go down to the two blocks down, and you're gonna find one. There's a gas station at Nisqually and Hesperia Road, Arco at Bear Valley and Mariposa, Mobile Shell, Arco at Amethyst and Bear Valley. I mean, they're everywhere. And it's already an absolute traffic nightmare, which would be an understatement to get around in Victorville during the daytime hours, without more, more building. I mean, that's kind of a busy intersection, Nisqually and Mariposa as it is, and it's kind of traffic hazardous somewhat, too. Access onto the freeway, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not sure that would even be a really wise choice for a gas station location, other than easy access on and off the freeway. But I am certainly, I made an observation a day or two ago. I was in my Arco, Bear Valley and Amethyst. You know, 19 years I've been going to that store. You know what it looks like now? A liquor store. Not just in the front, but on the sides, everywhere. It looks like a liquor store. So I don't see that as a positive thing, more alcohol, beer, wine, whatever you want to call it, hard liquor for purchase in this city. I mean, I think there's an abundance enough. Believe me, if people want it, they're gonna, they're gonna drive two miles or 25 miles, they're gonna get it. So you don't need one on every couple blocks. And I had, I turned in a public comment card. There was another thing I wanted to say non-relater. Should I do it now?
No, you have to wait until I get that one.
Okay.
I have several. I think that's what's confusing me, because there's more than one on a card.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Next is Al Peterson.
I'm Al Peterson. I apologize for not turning the card in. I didn't realize it was needed to be done ahead of time. What I am here is to tell you that I'm one of the over 100 people that wrote a letter and opposed to this. I'm an old guy. I'm 75. And if we don't leave our kids and our grandkids a good place to live, how can this nation become great again? I want it to become great again. I hope you want it to become great again. And I think you should deny the application for a place that's gonna serve alcohol within 300 feet of a church and a school. I really think that's not a place for it. And as was said before, the front doors of this church and school face right out on this. What are these people gonna see whenever they walk out? What are you gonna see when you think about it at night? You're gonna have to take this one with you and remember, today is the day to make a decision to move our city forward in a positive direction. Thank you.
I have another card, but it's Michael on Jefferson Boulevard. I cannot make out your last name, sir. I'm sorry.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Michael Brewer, and I also work with the applicant. We've heard a lot of emotional arguments this evening, and I, we take them seriously, the retailing of alcoholic beverages. That's why we've agreed to the conditions and operating standards that are proposed in your ordinance. We are only offering to sell a small amount of beer and wine in the store, and it is an essential part of a product mix and what our customers come to expect in these types of, this type of a facility, especially with all the extra amenities that we're adding to the store. But it's important, I wanted to note a couple of things, that the way that the statute has been characterized, that the alcoholic beverage control needs to follow, is being misrepresented to you. The statute just says that the Department of Alcohol Beverage has the right to refuse the issuance of a license. They're not required to refuse, to deny an application of a license that's within 600 feet of a sensitive use. They only have the right to if they find in their investigation that the grounds support it. And the mere proximity of a school, church, or public playground to a proposed application is insufficient grounds in and of itself for, to stand for denial. But that's up to the alcoholic beverage control to make that finding. We're dealing with the City of Victorville's ordinances here, and your ordinance does not require you to deny an application within a certain distance of these types of facilities. So I want to make that point. And then, in addition to that, though, this applicant has, you know, been very concerned about security and safety of the facility. It's a very upgraded, brand-new facility. They're not gonna allow it to fall into disrepair and be mistreated. They're not gonna be selling alcoholic beverages in a way that should negatively impact the church. And I haven't heard any testimony so far to actually draw that nexus of what the, how our retailing of small beer and wine under the conditions of approval that are being proposed in the use permit is actually going to negatively impact this community. We think that the services that we are offering at this station are going to meet that public convenience and necessity. We've agreed to very strict restrictions on our alcoholic beverage sales, and we don't focus on them. We're not having advertising on the front of the building indicating alcohol's even available inside the building. And our building is not oriented, the front of our building is not oriented towards the church and school. It is actually facing the Nisqually. Therefore, the church entrance can't see into our building. And so I don't see that we're gonna create the kinds of concerns that are being raised. Now, we do, you know, are sensitive to the church, and we are trying to meet with them and address any concerns. And we will have that ongoing discussion with them, even should a problem arise that can be attributed to the operation of our business. But we think with more surveillance cameras, more lighting in that area, and business activity, we don't think we're going to increase any kind of crime in the area. We hope to be a deterrent and offer very needed services and goods that are the community finds in that area. We're here to answer any other questions that you may have about our project, and we ask for your support tonight.
Thank you. Those are all the cards that I have. Correct? Okay. So at this time, I close the public hearing, and I will request council members' comments. We have any?
I have some questions.
Yeah, Doug, just a, just a question. Well, first of all, I, I think the reference that was made to a state code tonight was the ABC code, the alcoholic beverage control code. Those, as I read the package, are the ABC's reasons for denying if they should choose to. As the- Has the ABC denied an application of license for this facility?
No, they have not.
Other thing is that we had talked about concentrations of liquor facilities. Can you kind of give us an update? Where are we with that whole discussion? Because we didn't close any doors. That was not our objective, and that's not what we did. But where are we with concentrations in this area?
So it's two different things, really. The new codes that were adopted apply to, as one of the speakers termed it, the mom-and-pop liquor stores that are focused on liquor. This would be ancillary use, less than 10% of the area of the store. So it's not a liquor store, it's not advertised as a liquor store, so that over-concentration of liquor stores wouldn't apply in this case. The over-concentration from ABC's standpoint has to do with a census tract. Census tracts are various shapes and sizes. So it gives the authority to the city council to deny, ultimately, after going through the planning commission, depending on what the planning commission decides. So it's up to the planning staff, planning commission, to review whether or not there is specifically a concentration within this immediate area. And based on the recommendation tonight, based on the approval from the planning commission, I have to surmise that they believed that there is not a concentration. In fact, there are no opportunities to purchase any groceries or beer and wine in the immediate vicinity. And I would imagine that that came into their deliberations at some point.
I'm particularly concerned about the hard separation from a business that sells alcohol beverages of any kind, a church or school. Does this city council use 800 feet or 600 feet as a, what are the standards that this city council has adopted?
For, just to clarify, if you mean what we have termed as simply a liquor store, it has to do with the concentration, not necessarily a number of feet. So this is not determined to be a liquor store because it's less than 10% of the floor space for the shop.
I was, I, there's a very lengthy, very in-depth, and I was trying to get through this as best as I could. The best way for me to understand this was to physically go to the area and look, which I did. And I wasn't that familiar with the area, but I did note where the playground is. Not in front, but a parking lot, it's behind, so there's even a further separation. It's a, church property is really well-designed and enclosed in such a way to protect the students and, so, applaud them for that. But are, does the ABC set the rules that the city council has to follow? Or are those ABC rules that that agency follows and endorses? What has their jurisdiction have to do with the planning commission's jurisdiction to approve or deny?
Well, the ABC has their own set of rules, and then they have guidelines for the city council to follow. I'm not an expert in those. I would defer to either the city attorney or perhaps our director of development or one of his planning staff as to exactly when something is an absolute rule from ABC versus a guideline versus, you know, some sort of advice from ABC. Chris Portret, Director of Development, please.
Good evening, and this is Alex Howdige. He's the case planner for this case. As the last speaker and Doug have mentioned, these are ABC regulations. And as he stated, it's, it doesn't even specify that they have to deny the license within, when it's within 600 feet. He said, and he read, he knows it by heart almost. It says, "Mere proximity by itself is not sufficient to deny the license when it's within a distance like that to a sensitive use." So in Victorville, like was stated as well, in 2014, we did strengthen our alcohol liquor store requirements, made it very difficult. It would be very difficult to come into the city of Victorville with a new liquor store serving beer, wine, and alcohol. We do have a 600-foot, it is prohibited if you're within 600 feet of residential sensitive uses. But it was specifically written into the code that a gas station with accessory beer and wine sales can ask for a conditional use permit. And if the findings can be made that that's okay with the public health, safety, and welfare, the commission can do that. And that's what they did.
Chris, for informational purposes, and I'm asking this question, trying to clarify this, I guess, if they were outside of 600 feet, would the council have the authority to deny it?
A conditional use permit, sure.
Okay, okay.
Sure, a conditional use permit means that there could be reasons why it's not appropriate for the area.
Okay.
That's what the church is arguing.
Right.
The church is arguing their points for why it's not appropriate.
I have one more question, and then I know that... If, if this council looks at all the issues that we can possibly look at, make a decision, and later we find that we've made a mistake, not, you know, I know that everybody will say, "We told you so," but is the city's hands tied then from taking action to correct that? For example, let's say that neighborhood believes that they will sell beer and wine and be concerned outside and it'll cause a problem. All indications from the police department, light uses, that doesn't occur. Let's say we determine that's not going to occur. They build the facility, and then we determine that's occurring. Does this council, or the planning commission, or the ABC have the right to come in and say, "That's all for beer and wine, you can't sell it anymore"?
Yes, yes. Because of the conditional use permit and the rights that, it becomes a little bit more difficult, but if you have the reasons to show why it's causing harm to the neighboring properties, why the business isn't being run correctly, why they're in violations of their conditions of approval, if we can show that, we can go through a revocation process and remove their ability to sell beer and wine.
Can the city planning commission do that, whether or not ABC has complained?
Yes.
Who does it, they can?
Yes. They can still hold a license from ABC, but not a conditional use permit to use it in the city of Victorville.
That's all, thank you, Chair.
I have a question for you, too. For that revocation process, it seems to be a little bit complicated. Who would they go to if that were, what do they need to document? What is the process? Do they go to you? Do they come to us? Do we agendize this? How is that?
We could certainly help them get their evidence in order and file an application, yes. It would, it could be either somebody proposing it, or it would be the city, the city of Victorville, proposing the revocation, based on the evidence.
In other cases, we've had both our code enforcement working in concert with the police department to, you know, write up all the facts and statements of the planning commission, and ultimately, potentially, the city council needs to make that decision.
Anyone else?
Well, I have more, I mean, I have something I'd like to say, but there's no more questions on my behalf. But if you don't have any more remarks, I'd like to make my remarks. Okay? So in my discretionary, in my discretionary opinion, as a council member, I believe that it's my duty to consider the exceptions to planning policies when there are unintended consequences, undue burdens, to consider the interests of the entire community. And in reading my decision through full consideration of the aspects of the project, I have considered the views of the governing board, which is the planning commission, in my decision.
We will do that when we make a motion here.
Okay, so I'm getting ready to do a motion.
But we haven't called for that yet.
Okay, well, can I finish my thought, and then we'll, I won't do a motion? So I've considered, like I said, the governing board, planning commission's decisions, and I've heard a couple of remarks. I didn't catch the person's name, but I did quote that you had said that the planning commission acted arbitrarily without concern, and that the facts don't support that finding of public convenience and necessity. I also heard those remarks, and I also read them. There are concerns for children that you have there. There are concerns for the loitering situations. There are concerns for safety. The alcohol sales become also a concern, and I think crime growth would be a concern. The north and east side of this area is heavily residential housing units. The south side is multifamily resident, residential housing. The west is only the commercial site, which is a C2 for a planning, for something like the site map to, to get something of this nature. So I'll go ahead and leave it to you.
Go down, okay.
Is there a motion?
Well, I wanted to do a motion, but she stopped me, so.
Well, you were speaking. Didn't we have a motion, please?
Yeah, so, so I move that we, we adopt the Resolution 17-003, Section 2, that although the planning commission approved the subject site plan, PLN 1600021, in accordance with Section 16.3.07.020 of the municipal code for alcohol sales as conditional. The determination to approve the project was based on findings that the city council believes were made in error. I also move that the council approve a finding of public convenience and necessity, and I furthermore move to adopt tentative parcel, case number PLN 15007, to allow for the creation of the two parcels from an existing approximate, approximate five-acre parcel on the above-described property as approved. And Andre, you can probably put this better in legal lease, and if there's a second, I mean, I would ask, ask to someone to support for this to be in play.
Let me try and clarify what your intent of your motion is, if I understand it correctly. It would be to move the approval of the project with the exception of the beer and wine sales? Is that what you're?
Yes, that's what it is.
So essentially, what that motion would be, would be approving and the resolutions affirming the planning commission decisions, Resolutions 1, 2, and 4, and then approving the Resolution 003, which denies the, basically, the beer and wine part of the decision.
Right, that was a recommendation that we had from our staff.
But what that would do would allow for the project to go forward without the beer and wine sales.
Right.
But the motion is to essentially approve resolutions in the affirmative of 001, 002, 004, and approve resolution in the negative, denying, or, sorry, granting the appeal of Resolution 17003.
Madam Mayor, if I may, make a second motion. My comments in general are that we have a planning commission that is charged with the serious issues of the city, land use being one of the top for any municipality. It is very unusual for us to appoint planning commissioners and then overrule them, especially when a project like this, 10% floor space. That was not highlighted in a lot of the comments that I heard. The conditions that we have, this project has met those conditions, and the planning commission has sent it, has approved that project. So my motion would be to deny the appeal.
We don't have a second yet. We have, I assume this is a substitute motion right now, so we would take action on that and then go back to the first motion. But what I'm hearing is a substitute motion to approve all four resolutions denying the appeal.
I knew that, get us confused. Didn't the first motion die for the lack of a second? There was never a second to the first?
We never got that far. We got, I think, a substitute motion as opposed to even having a second yet. So we typically...
Yours would be the first.
You can withdraw your motion at this point. We can have discussion on the first motion, or we can have discussion on the second motion, depending on how that comes out, we then go back to the first motion.
We want discussion on the second motion.
You're going to withdraw your motion right now?
I'll withdraw my motion, please.
Okay, so now we are back to the first motion of Councilmember Gomez, that motion being to grant, sorry, to deny the appeal on the Resolutions 1, 2, and 4, which essentially basically is approval of the site plan, approval of the parcel split, et cetera. And then also to, her motion includes then adopting the resolution granting the appeal on Resolution Number 3, which has the effect of denying the ability to sell beer and wine sales. That's the effect of the motion. Complicated, but that's it. That's three resolutions affirming, basically would allow the project to go forward, and one resolution granting the appeal, which would deny the ability to sell beer and wine. That's the motion on the floor. There a second?
If there's no second, then it dies.
Yes, it dies for lack of a second.
And so therefore, as I was saying, general comments, we understand this is a concerning issue, for sure. But legally, this process is where it is. And again, I make the motion to deny the appeal affirming Resolutions 17-001, 17-002, 17-003, and 17-004.
And those are the resolutions affirming the planning commission decision across the board.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez opposing.
I have a question. Councilman Negretti?
We already closed this section. I'm moving on.
Council remarks, I used to have my question answered.
We do not have any public hearings. We will move on to consent counter. Consent counter items C1 through C9 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to written communications. And I do have some cards. Item D1, purchase of an HR800 mower. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council approve an additional appropriation request in the amount of $536 from Fund 100, the general fund, and approve the purchase of an HR800 mower under the National Joint Powers Alliance Contract Number 070313-JSC as budgeted in the fiscal year 2016-2017 capital improvement project budget.
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D2, appointments to the city's committees by council members. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation would be that the city council members either reaffirm or make changes to their appointments to the city's committees.
Well, look, can we handle them individually? On the Community Services Advisory Committee, I think people who know me know I'm pretty involved, not only with items in the community, but items that the Community Services Department handle. And I've had a lot of people ask to be able to serve. And I don't want to be arbitrary, and so what I would like to do, if it's permitted by the city council, is to advertise in an appropriate way for any and all individuals who are interested in serving, at least for the individual that I want to submit to council for approval, because it's a council approval, to go ahead and submit a resume and a short letter to the city clerk so that we can open it up to all interested parties. There's an awful lot of people involved that are quietly helping. There's a lot of people that have several years of experience that aren't on the committee, but they assist the committee, and so because we have an interest here, I'd like to see everyone have a chance. So that's acceptable. There's no objection from the council for my appointment on the Community Services Advisory Committee. I'd like to open it up.
It is acceptable, correct?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
We've done that for other positions in the past. In our Legislative Review Committee, we did that. When Councilmember Vias was first on the council, she asked, and we advertised for planning commission, interested parties for the planning commission, and she selected from the folks that had submitted for... and she selected from the folks that had submitted for that. So something we do pretty, fairly routinely, and hopefully, uh, the Daily Press can help us out with a little bit of advertising, letting the good folks of Victorville know that we're, that you're looking for an appointee for the Community Services Advisory Committee.
Can we do it on the website?
Absolutely. Facebook, every, every outlet that we have.
This is for Cox's appointee, right?
But...
This is for your appointee?
Just, that's my, for my appointee on, we, I'm only talking about the Community Services Advisory Committee. I thought to keep them separately, but make sure that they don't get all jumbled up into one.
Uh...
It's the first one, and that's my recommendation for my appointment, not for the other individual's appointment.
And I will retain the, the three that I have already, the Planning Commission and, uh, who is Rob Kurt, and Debbie is for...
LUSA, for Legislative Review.
And then Ron, I forget his last name.
Uh, Ron?
Yeah, I, I will retain them. And I, no, but...
And then for mine, Carol Lee, did you receive the letter for the person that's going to be a Planning Commissioner on, that I'm appointing? You should have submitted something by now.
Uh, the letter that, um, I have on file is from Anthony Rhodes, but noth- nothing recent.
You didn't have anything from Romero?
Um, is, is that your Community Services Advisory?
No, there were, at one point he was, but he's going to submit for...
I did not receive a letter from him for Planning Commissioner.
Okay.
Just for the Community Services Advisory Committee position.
And for the Legislative Review, then I'll open up, and if you can advertise, I'm looking for Legislative Review.
Okay.
So we're going to advertise for you also, then?
Only for the Legislative Review, the other two were waiting for them to submit something, so I'll get on them to submit.
On Legislative Review, if that's the next one? I have a very good individual that's serving, very good, doing a great job, got experience that's important. But again, I had a lot of people who want to be considered, and so I find those.
Okay.
And certainly, the individuals who are there now recommend that they submit a letter, but there's a lot of interest from people wanting to serve the city, and I appreciate that, so.
And people that are actually with experience and...
Yeah, we're lucky that we have a lot of people.
Yeah. Um, do, we don't need a motion in this one here, correct?
I think there's just a consensus, from what I understand, to go out and advertise, make those positions available, or make the public aware of those positions to submit letters of interest.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to say there are no changes for my appointees, just reaffirming them.
And then I'd like to make a comment for the Planning Commissioner. Um, it's, the qualification is a layperson, so just, just letting you guys know that.
Okay, so...
I'm sure, I'm sorry.
On this here, uh, we will be doing the advertising, and, uh, we will bring this back at our next meeting, or...
From what I understand, there's going to be advertising for those two positions being available, and they would be, assuming Mr. Cox, would they make a decision based on, on whoever submits proposals? We haven't gotten to the Planning Commission, I don't believe, yet. I don't know why. Scott said you want to handle Planning Commission.
And Councilmember Gomez, you'd like your Legislative Review Committee appointee advertised, as well as that?
Yes, just that one position.
Very well. All right, moving on.
We, we still haven't discussed Planning Commission, I don't believe, fully.
Uh, I'm sorry, I, I indicated last time we have ninety days to make the appointment.
We do.
And I wanted to make all the appointments at the same time. I don't make an appointment, but I get, to the council, I'd like to do them all at the same time.
And no interest necessarily in advertising that one, that's just going to be an appointment. Is, I assume the rest of the council's all in consensus and agreement? Okay.
Yes. Are we all in agreement?
Okay.
Moving on to D3, adopting a recognized obligation payment schedule. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the Successor Agency Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number RSA seventeen dash zero zero one, thereby approving the annual recognized obligation payment schedule for the period commencing July one, twenty seventeen, and ending on June thirty, twenty eighteen.
Just a quick question. This, this thing has created some problems with the Department of Finance in the past?
Uh, this is something that we approve and then take it to an oversight board and, and finally is subjected to, uh, a final approval by State Department of Finance. Um, they have in the past disallowed certain items. Um, so this is basically a repeat of that same process. Um, not expecting any problems, no.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D4, grant of easement on Shea Road to Southern California Edison. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council grant an easement on, across APN zero three six eight, zero three one, zero nine, across Shea Road to Southern California Edison, and authorize staff to execute said easement.
This is the, uh, the, the work that Edison Company wants to do on the lines near...
For VVWA, where the birds are.
That's correct, correct.
Yes.
That's correct.
Oh, they just go to the right solution first instead of go through three one, three that aren't going to work before they get to, but that's the Edison Company.
We need a second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
D5, award of consultant professional service provider agreement to Water Systems Consulting, Inc., for water master plan update. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council award a consultant professional services provider agreement for water master update to Water Systems, Water Systems, Inc., for an amount not to exceed three hundred sixty thousand, eight hundred thirty-five dollars.
I have a couple of questions, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
This is for the updating the comprehensive two thousand and ten water master plan. And so this will be completed at what period? Two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen?
Program?
Um, we're, we're expecting it to be done this year. Brian, if you could provide a little, a little detail. Keith and I got caught a little flat-footed with that one.
Is it a ten-year plan? Is it, what is it?
It's about a twelve-month schedule to complete the master plan update.
What period forward will it cover? Five years, ten years?
And it's a five-year period. It'll cover a five-year capital plan. And it'll also stretch out into the future for capacity projects needed for connection fees and so forth.
I have a question. So it's a five-year, but twelve-month period? How is that?
It, it will take the consultant about twelve months to complete the master plan update. But the planning period will be for five years in the future and beyond.
Okay.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D6, application for annexation to the San Bernardino County Fire Protection District's North Desert Service Zone and Service Zone FP dash five. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation, and I do have a couple of cards here.
The recommendation is that the City Council adopt Resolution number seventeen dash zero zero five in support of an application for annexation into the San Bernardino County Fire Protection District's North Desert Service Zone and Service Zone FP five, and approve an additional appropriation in the amount of one hundred eleven thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars from the General Fund for the associated filing fees.
Thank you. Uh, the first card that I have is William Burhoff.
How are you guys doing this evening? So basically, I wanted to address this, because the main reason why you guys are doing this is for public safety, you're trying to get more money for that. I feel it'd be extremely irresponsible to the property owners of the city if the council moved forward with the plans to offset costs for fire services. The city has other avenues that it can use to address the budgetary shortcomings, and I feel that the council stretching its imagination isn't not, basically, you're, I feel like the imagination's something stretched too far. You guys are looking for fiscal ways to solve some of these issues when we need to be solving them in planning ways. Uh, currently our city in, you know, has a big crime and homeless issue with transients, and can be closely tied to the large amount of budget hotels and motels within the city, and especially in the old Victorville area. If you look at it, there's actually disproportionate amount of crime around these old budget hotels and motels, and it is an issue for us. And that is what's causing a large increase in transients, homeless issues, as well as drug and other crimes. Um, I'm not wanting to come down or complain on businesses that do the right thing, but Victorville does have a problem by having such a large amount of budget hotels, motels within our city compared to neighboring towns, and also comparatively when looked at per capita capital populace. The scenario, is my opinion, is the reason that our city has become a dumping ground for transients, criminals, and homeless, which we have seen. We've seen them all coming here, and we're trying to figure out why are they all here? And it is a big reason. Actually, I did a long study on this, uh, trying to appropriate how this was happening. Um, I'd encourage the city manager and the city council to look into this matter. Um, there are ordinances that you guys can be due, this, as far as to help generate revenue and cure this issue, looking at the similar models, like Elsinore had a similar problem. What they went ahead and did is they actually, um, resulted in a twenty percent reduction in crime by cracking down on the budgetary hotels and motels. By doing that, it actually saved their budget overall, one point two million dollars eventually, and that was over, I think, a five-year span. Um, sorry, my notes are a little jumbled here. Uh, the first would be to create a fee to the motel slash hotel where the residents have stayed longer than seven days. This is for transient use. You guys could do that pretty easily. There could be a nominal amount, but it would allow a funding source for the city to help deal with the burden and condol, can be a conduit, basically to de-incentivize the business from providing transient housing to people who have a high potential to becoming homeless. And part of this ordinance, I would like the city to adopt an ordinance that requires mandatory reporting of a situation toward, it would be reasonable to assume that a family with children is homeless and/or drugs or crimes are happening within a budgetary hotel or motel. I think it should be mandatory reporting for these people to do that so, and there should be a three-strikes-you're-out type of issue where you guys actually revoke their issue and sell their business permit. Um, I think that that is a good thing to do. The city's strapped for money, and we need to think of ways that are outside of the box to tackle these issues. And I don't think increasing the taxes on the homeowners and the people that are owing parcels is a way to do that. I think that there's many ways to get this done. Um, in addition to this, I also think that the city needs help with code enforcement. Uh, a big issue, the reason why we have crime in Old Town, and it's a bigger problem there, in addition to this, is the broken window effect. Um, it's, it's not just, you know, a theory, it was proven in New York many years ago. And we personally, we, looking at the budget and analyzing and stuff, I realized the city doesn't have money to hire more code enforcement officers. You guys don't have it. So by making programs like this that actually deal with the issue and create funding for those sources to hire more code enforcement officers, I think it would be positive.
You have thirty seconds.
See the light going up. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you. And you have three minutes, sir.
Yes, I understand, thank you. Um, I'm going to focus my comments on the special tax, the escalator, which I think is an increase. Uh, last week at your workshop, you talked about that special tax for the fire protection zone of being about a hundred and forty-eight to a hundred and fifty dollars a year with a three percent increase. And my question is focusing on that three percent increase, in the sense of, is that three percent increase comes to about five dollars on page four of your report in your agenda. That's what you estimated it to be, from one forty-eight to a hundred and fifty-three dollars. So would three percent of the following year be based on a hundred and fifty dollars, or would it be based on a hundred and fifty-eight dollars? Does it escalate the same way that the rate would escalate? That's what I want to focus on, because according to my calculations, the, uh, twenty seventeen tax would be a hundred and forty-eight dollars, twenty eighteen, a hundred and fifty-three. By twenty twenty-two, it goes up to a hundred and seventy-three. Every five years would be a twenty-five dollar increase, if it's a stable five-dollar increase every year, not more than five dollars. But at five dollars, it goes up twenty-five dollars in five years. So in thirty years, it doubles. So I'd like to see more math on that side of the equation, as I asked for a week ago. That's what I came up with, based on the figures supplied in your report. And so again, as a homeowner, I'm curious about how I could, you know, realistically budget for that, especially over time. I'd like to understand the reality of it over time, in the context of the other expenses the city has, such as the Nissquali Overpass to finish paying for, and the, the Green Tree, uh, project that's also listed in your agenda, you know, the funding sources for that, you know. And the context of this should also be, again, put all together. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the cards that I have. Is there any...
Madam Mayor, uh, before you get into any questions or comments from the council, um, just so the council's aware and the public's aware, that three percent is not an automatic increase. That's something that the County Board of Supervisors considers on an annual basis, based on cost, based on inflation, based on cost of living, that sort of thing. Um, it is not, has not always been a complete three percent. I don't know the exact history of it, but to estimate it for, you know, the next ten, fifteen, or twenty years, it would be inappropriate to say that it's going to be three percent every year, because we simply don't know that. The public would have the opportunity for input with the Board of Supervisors every time annually that they consider, uh, this potential cost increase.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Um, I have a, it's for clarification. Um, I'll give both of them to you, Doug. Somewhere in this report, and I read it carefully, but you made the comment of the increase, eight percent would go to the city and eight percent to the county. If I recall that, we were talking about, there would be a stated amount of taxes pledged to county fire. And then, after that, were, were you talking about the increase in the normal property tax, not the hundred and fifty-dollar fee? What is the eight, how, what's sixteen percent? Is that the amount of total property tax we receive of the total property tax bill?
Yeah, so currently, the city receives approximately sixteen percent of the property tax that's spent in Victorville. So for every hundred dollars that you pay to the county through your, uh, property taxes, sixteen of that comes to the city of Victorville for general services. Um, for the purposes of discussion and comparison, we effectively have assigned that to the fire department to pay for the contract, just for comparison purposes only. That's not the way it actually works. Um, uh, the item that's before you tonight would be to request that Lafco, uh, make a change to that. And that change would involve, would involve a permanent, um, allocation to San Bernardino County Fire in exchange for annexation into the district. Um, using the chart that is on, I'm not sure which page this is, of, of the proposal, I think it's page four or so, with the box around it. Um, that's estimated to be nine million, five hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. Um, that is estimated to be fifty-six percent of the property tax, uh, that we would otherwise normally collect, which would be estimated at sixteen point nine million dollars. So, um, if this is, uh, approved by the City Council, it would go to the local agent for, local agency formation commission, uh, for further study, review, and a staff report would be developed. Um, that would perfect all of these numbers with the tax assessor's estimates for next year, that's what they do. Um, and ultimately, um, at one point in time, which would be July first, um, that split would occur, and then permanently, it would continue to, to go on. So, uh, effectively, we would, based on this example, or based on this estimation, the city would retain about forty-four percent. Uh, remainder to the General Fund is about seven point four million dollars of that money, um, seven point five, let's call it. Uh, and then nine point five would go to county fire for continued operations. Add to that the roughly five point eight million in FP five parcel tax, and that gives them the funding that they need to continue the services that they're offering now, to add a paramedic crew starting July first, to open fire station three fifteen and add an engine company, which is nine personnel, in approximately two years, two to three years, uh, and to replace all of the equipment that we have been unable to replace in the, in the last ten years. So on a go-forward basis, our new property tax amount would be estimated about seven point five million dollars for next fiscal year. If property tax rise at three percent, four percent, or whatever, it would affect... If property tax rise at 3%, 4%, or whatever, it would affect that just naturally through the tax assessor's calculations. The parcel tax is separate. That's that roughly $5.8 to $6 million. That would go to county fire as a parcel tax that separately the county board of supervisors could raise by up to 3% on an annual basis. So those two funding sources come together.
Doug, let's, let's take all of this complexity that we've built into this thing and boil it down to the simplest, basic truth. We are raising the property tax on our citizens by $6 million. We're going to shuffle that between us and the county. We're going to keep three or four. They're going to take the rest, and we're going to hand over all the fire service to the county. Now, that's the deal.
That is correct.
The citizens are going to pay $6 million more in property taxes by this method. I got a, I got a, and all the rest of it is, I'm sorry, I'm an accountant. It's mumbo jumbo. I know mumbo jumbo. I got a question. On page 15 of the plan of service from the, at a budget of $15.4 million next year, there are two items at the bottom of that. One is vehicle replacement fund of $630 million roughly. A vehicle replacement catch-up fund of, did I say million?
Yeah.
I didn't mean million.
Thousand.
I'm sorry.
What page is that again? I'm sorry.
600, I'm on page 15. It's, 651,000 for the replacement fund and, I'm sorry, 630 and 650 for a catch-up fund. A total of about $1,003,003, that's, as I understand it, is focused on equipment replacement. Will that be spent this year, or is it just going into a fund that the county's going to hold and spend when they get around to?
I don't, I don't know if you want to hear from me or from Dan Muncy, our fire chief. But essentially, the vehicle replacement fund, the way a vehicle, and this is going to sound like mumbo jumbo again, maybe Dan can simplify it, but essentially, the way a vehicle replacement fund works is you take the cost of an engine, fire engine, say that's $600,000, and you expect it to last 10 years. You need to collect approximately $60,000 a year to replace that engine when it's at the end of its life in 10 years.
What's the approximate cost of replacing an engine?
An engine is, I would say, $550,000 to $750,000. Is that correct, Dan? In that, in that name?
Do we need to replace right now?
Well, Dan?
Immediately, you need to replace three engines in a truck, which is significantly more expensive.
When you say immediately, do you mean that the engines are going to stop running this next year, or going to-
Absolutely. In case in point, I went to the city manager's office today with a bill for a fire engine, and it's essentially $14,000 to make or repair. The fire engine's a 2002. It's been frontline. We have, today, we have a Grant fire engine, fire engine in the picture there. That's your most reliable engine. The next two engines were built in 2006. Our, our standards of replacement are based on National Fire Protection Agency guidelines. The next engines are 2002. Our next engine's in 1996, and then we have in 1989. So you can see they far out seeded their life expand. Earlier this year, we had a $38,000 repair on the engines. So it's not only the repair costs are stacking up, but there are reliability's fire engines on fires and emergency incidents.
Yeah, so the second part of your question about the vehicle replacement catch-up fund, I commented that the fire department's intention is to open fire station 315.
Hang on, hang on, Doug. If, if we need to replace three engines, and they are how much, 5, 600,000?
Yeah.
So a million and a half ought to buy us three engines?
Yeah.
Pretty quickly?
No, sir. That engine right there is $660,000, and it's anticipated to increase 10% next year.
I'm sorry.
Six, $660,000.
It's closer to 2 million to replace three engines.
So we might get two in this next year without of this budget?
So the vehicle replacement catch-up is intended to catch us up on those three engines that we need to have replaced. So the money that two to three years from now will hire fire department personnel, the new staffing, is going to be saved for now to replace fire engines for two to three-year period.
And explain to me why we can't replace the fire engines ourself?
We don't have the money to do it.
Going to pay it to the county next year?
Correct.
How is that?
That would come from the FP5 monies.
So we need that $6 million from local taxpayers. All right, so.
Correct.
The decision before us is whether we're going to assess a $6 million tax on our local property owners to pay for fire and turn everything over to the county?
Yes, yes.
What other choices do we have?
As far as funding, I did put some options in your staff report. One of the options that you could have that would bring potential additional revenue to the city would be to go for a special election. A special election for fire services would take quite a bit of time to put together.
June?
I don't know exactly what the timeframe would look like, as far as when we could do that.
What if we gave the citizens by June the option of paying the 150 to the county or paying 100 to us, and that would get us 4 million instead of 6, as soon as we could get it in place and replace the fire engines that way?
That, that is an option. A special tax is very difficult to pass because it has a 2/3 majority requirement.
I suspect that if the voters in this city had the choice between paying 140, because we'd have to tell them, if you don't approve the 100, we don't have any choice. We've got to go with the county at 140. That's your choice. Take your pick.
150.
You don't, 150. Don't you think we'd get a pretty good turnout on that vote?
I think we would get a good turnout, and I believe it would fail.
Okay, then we'd go to the county. If the voters don't want something else, we'd go to the county.
Right, right.
Don't you think the voters in this city ought to have something to say about this new tax that we're going to assess on the property?
Absolutely, absolutely. The, this, this item is on the agenda. The voters can come here and express their opinion. And then additionally, when LAFCO makes a decision, if they decide to, in favor of the annexation, the voters would have an opportunity to protest that vote.
Madam Mayor, may I make a comment real quick? I think it's to, I agree with council member Kennedy, just to simplify it. We're talking about a new budget of $15 million. Even if we raise that budget every year for 3%, that's like $450,000. We would never be able to catch up with all the unfunded requirements the fire department has right now. Breathing apparatus, engines, stations. They will catch up ideally with the county FP5. But if you, if you do not, the, the city of Victorville cannot afford to be on a contract anymore with fire. The, the service demands have outpaced our revenues. There is no money, and if we don't do this, there's going to be layoffs. In addition to being able to turn this responsibility over to the county, we'd also be able to have five more deputies, correct me if I'm wrong. We'd also be able to return the city back to work, to a 40-hour work week. There are many other positives as well. So the real question is, would you rather have 15%, I'm sorry, $15 million a year growing out of control, trying to catch up to things that we, there's no way we're going to be able to pay for? Or would you rather have a $148 parcel tax? So for me, it's very simple. It, it's not, it's not ideal. But on the other hand, we're limited in our opportunities, and this is apparently, this is a win-win solution. But if we adjust the water rates and, and we say, we've been on a flat rate all these years. Now we're going to have the, the top users pay more, and the, and the, and the majority of the residential units, they're going to pay less. We're going to tier that system. All, all people here is, you're raising my water rates. So with this, it's very simple. We cannot afford to stay on a contract anymore.
Well, we can't aff, the only way we can afford this is by assessing tax on the property owners. That's it. That's the only option, whether we do it ourselves or with the county. You might be right. This might be the best deal. My problem is, we're going to plunge, we're going to make a forever decision that there's never any coming back from, and this is the only option we've considered. We have not looked at any other choices.
We have. There was a two, three years, I mean, you can say more about this, where we're getting our neighboring cities like Hispania, Adelanto, and Vic, and Hispania, Adelanto, and Apple Valley. And I asked for those reports to see if we can make something as a joint unification. I haven't gotten those reports, but I was glad to hear that there was a report already in play. And now you can express more about what it is that you guys did two, three years ago. Because I've also asked, why can't we hold our own fire protection services? And in 2008, it was switched over. So, and you explained that to me very nicely as well. So I don't know if that's something that you can allude to.
Sure. So a couple of years ago, this council, as well as the councils in Apple Valley, Hispania, and Adelanto, agreed to look at combining services for both police and fire. The police agency that was considered would have been for all four of the cities of the Victor Valley. The fire agency that was looked at would not have included Apple Valley for a variety of reasons. So that, including Apple Valley, and that wasn't studied. Essentially, that study showed that the potential return on investment for the police agency was an estimated 16 or so years out, that you would potentially cross over to savings. It was, essentially died at that point, because it's simply too far away. Now you're using guesswork. The fire agency that was considered was shorter than that. I want to say it was four or five years that there was potentially a return on investment for differing reasons. But ultimately, for, again, a variety of reasons, largely because one of the agencies considered was Adelanto, and I don't think there was a lot of interest in, at that time, entering into a joint-use type of agreement with an agency that, that was bankrupt or effectively bankrupt at the time, especially for an essential service that you would, could potentially then be required to provide. If you were to exclude Adelanto, now you're down to only two agencies, and the, the scale, savings really kind of went away. This council hasn't considered any time recently, at least, going back to city fire. That is an option. That would give the council the negotiating authority with the fire union that would be in place, most likely. You would then control your own destiny to a certain degree. But the way public salaries are, are negotiated, there, you may be able to provide some savings, but my estimation would be that it would not be significantly less than what county fire or Apple Valley firefighters ultimately make. So I don't think there's a tremendous amount of savings there, certainly nothing that provides the punch that FP5 does.
And then another thing for Apple Valley, yes, they had their voters go ahead and submit their votes. First time it didn't pass. Second round, it eventually passed. And I went on a ride-along for eight hours, and I visited all five stations, and I got a lot of information. And one of the important information bits or pieces that I think I should bring out is, although Apple Valley did not do their own FP5, like, we're trying to do a possible annexation, some of the things that Apple Valley wasn't able to do, and we still kind of have and would have that opportunity is, if Apple Valley has their station with a call for 911, we, they will not be able to contact us in Victorville or their local fire station to cover that. And so on those ride-alongs, every time there was station 311 and their medics' engines were leaving, we had to have another nearby cover that, and if there was another call, they had to cover. So there is not enough coverage, and we're using 315 as a storage space. And I know Muncy is better at explaining what all this information was. I, I met with Captain Gregoli, Captain Agiri, the battalion chief. So I got a lot of insight into what it is that the possible annexation would be. And I'm sorry that the workshop wasn't suffice, but to me, that ride-along expressed so much. We contract with AMR. When they're at a level zero, we get called in. But when we don't have that accessibility, because all of our trucks are being used on a 911 call, they're calling people from Summit in Redlands to cover something that's probably five minutes away. So I mean, Mr. Muncy, if you would, you know, elaborate on that, I mean, you would help greatly.
So the greatest benefit for joining county fire is regionalized fire protection. And they gave an example during the workshop of Hispania Fire Station, Apple Valley Fire Station, a county fire station, a Victorville station, being within a couple of miles from each other. With regionalized fire protection, we're able to be a little more fiscally conservative with the dollars to provide better coverage. And that's a little bit what council member Gomez was talking about. The second efficiency is if, right now, if you were to go and open your own fire station 315, you're going to pay 2.3 to 2.5 million dollars. The proposal in front of you is that the county share in those costs. The city of Victorville doesn't bore the whole cost of that fire station. And the same is true with the paramedic squad at fire station 313. The county fire protection district's bearing those costs. With the contract, we can't do that as well. With the contract, we have to look at the borders of the city and what is the city providing. But we don't have the flexibility that annexation would allow us to do.
You go back and look at your argument several years ago, the argument was just the opposite. By having the contract, you can cover for each other, because it's county fire stations, counties in the city. You can cover for each other. When did you change that policy?
Policy hasn't changed. It's enhanced by annexation. With the county of San Bernardino under our contract, we're able to make a phone call at any given point and put 30 fire engines into the city. That still exists.
You argued that by having the contract with the county, that we would have more coverage than just the city, because they would, since the county was operating in and out, they would be able to cover for each other. Now you're saying with the contract, you can't. You have to join the fire district.
No, sir.
That's a change of policy.
No, sir. That's not what I'm saying. You have the ability to call additional fire engines and help under a contract, and that's what we've been doing with the city of Victorville now for almost 10 years. The difference is, is being able to fiscally share resources and to co-staff fire stations like station 315. Again.
Okay, I'll stop. You cover so many items that you.
Yes, sir.
You indicated if you open up this fire station, if we annex to the district, 315, I believe it is, they can share that cost with the county. If you have an area now that that station would cover, what covers that area now? And by contract, why couldn't you open the station and cover the same area?
We certainly can with the contract. So to open fire station 315 alone would be 2.4 million dollars.
To open it alone, how much is it to open the station, sharing the cost for the larger area that's in the county area?
Under the, under the proposal in front of you to annex, that that cost would be split 50/50. It's a financial modeling for both the, the fire station and the squad at 313. And our current squad at 311 is being shared by the county. This leaves the opportunity for us to spread the money out and be more conservative.
I, I absolutely agree. I'm not, I don't want to.
Let me put it into a simple dollar. So I'm going to cut all the accounting out, because I'm not an accounting. What we're asking for with annexation is an increase in 2.4 million dollars. It would cost, if you were to open your fire station, to provide for apparatus, to do your SCBA's, to open a squad at 313, you're looking at over $6 million. So the cost savings by annexation would be approximately $3.6 million in the first year.
So if, and I'm not suggesting that the city have its own fire department, but if the city did, you couldn't arrive at reciprocal agreements?
Absolutely. Do you have automatic aid and mutual aid? And that deals with responses, but it doesn't do, what it doesn't deal with is, is the financial aspect of the fire department.
If, since I have questions, let me continue if I can. If you have the station at the fairgrounds, is that the headquarters station?
Yes, sir.
How many trucks do you have there?
We have one fire engine and one fire truck, a paramedic squad, and a battalion chief each day.
So when you get a fire call, do all those vehicles respond?
Yes, sir. Usually.
And then, there's no one there, and so you indicated you have to take another station and send a fire station there. Why? Why can't it respond from wherever it's at? I do know it's two fire calls, not one, when you do that.
So if we have.
The firefighters I talk to, that ends up with two fire calls at one fire, because you're responding to the other station. I don't understand that. It's one call.
This is not just, not just something we do in Victorville. This is something that's done across the United States and probably the world. But as you have a major incident, you have to bring in resources to cover that area. Just because there's a fire going on doesn't mean someone's not going to have a heart attack nearby. So we bring in our county stations that are a little more slower. For example, Spring Valley Lake routinely comes into Victorville.
Okay. I, I have one. I have one more question. This is to Doug, it involves you. If you go back to the presentation that you made, you said your proposal to LAFCO, and I can read it, or I'll just paraphrase it. The proposal would involve the fire district getting the 148 per year, next year 152, and 16 million, 15 to 16 million from the current taxes, 13.2 being assigned from our fire taxes to the county. About 40 minutes later, 35 minutes later, the city manager said it was his expectation of the 9.5 million going to the county. And that way, that would make the budget 15 million max, because they could get by with that for this year. Now, who does LAFCO? You're going to, you're going to devise your own plan. You're going to ask for 13.2 million of our property taxes, city manager's going to ask for 9.5 million of the property taxes. I remember the LAFCO rep saying they would make the decision based upon the Plan for Service. That really makes me nervous, because we don't do the Plan for Service, the fire department does.
So there's two different things. One is the total amount, if you assume the full 15 million dollars, 15.4 million dollars that the fire department would need without FP5, that takes approximately 90% of our property tax on a permanent basis. With FP5, that drops down to approximately 56%. So it's two separate, not even proposals. It's what the alternative would be if you didn't incorporate or annex into FP5 as a part of this item. The Plan for Service itself is actually attached to this document, and will go down, if it's approved, it will go down to LAFCO tomorrow, probably late morning or early afternoon for submittal, so that we can hopefully have it adopted by LAFCO in time for the July 1st implementation date.
Well, but, again, I don't want to argue. I listened to that tape twice. Dan's comments was with the current plan to add the squad and open 315 and the equipment needed. You're looking at 16, 17 million. This is why that he was, proposal is 13.2 million plus, plus. So it wasn't either or, it was both put together. I can play the tape to you if you'd like, and you contradicted that by saying no, that your proposal was 9.5 of the current and the tax. Now, it wasn't, it wasn't 15.2 and no tax, it was both. I had to go back and listen to it twice. It's very clear.
I, I haven't listened to the tape. If that was said, I can tell you that's an error.
Okay.
I, you know, without listening to it, and actually, the tape, at this point, I don't want to say it's immaterial, because it is material in the event that there's confusion about this, but I think both the agenda item and the Plan for Service and the accounting work that would be done by LAFCO will make that very clear, that it is not, in fact, both.
I'm sorry for being confusing, Mr. Cox. If you look at page 15 on the Plan for Service, it lays it out in black and white. That is the Plan for Service for Victorville today. That's when it goes to LAFCO. It's not going to be enhanced. It's what the city and what the fire district believe is, and LAFCO requirements, is the best process to move forward. We have to open Fire Station 315. We have to have more paramedic squads to run the medical aids. We have to have apparatus replacement. We have to have station replacement. Those are the requirements set forth, but I'm sorry if I misspoke or was confusing. It's absolutely in black and white in the service plan in front of you.
Have you budgeted for the breathing apparatus in this 15.4 million?
You would not see a bill for the breathing apparatus. That 700 and some odd thousand dollars would not go to the city. The fire protection district would pay those costs.
That's if we accept this...
Yes, sir.
If we don't accept the proposal, if we decide not to annex, and we continue with the county contract, do you have a budget for the, are you going to charge us for the breathing apparatus or not?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I have no other option but to charge.
No, I understand. That's fine. All I'm saying here, I'm not necessarily arguing with a contract with the county. That might be our best option. I wouldn't mind considering others. CalFire understands contracts with three cities in this county. Maybe we should at least get a proposal from them. What I'm not comfortable with, imposing a tax by our decision on our voters, our, not voters, whether they vote or not, doesn't matter, our citizens, without giving them the option under Prop 218 to vote on that. That is a dodge, in my opinion. We're playing a shell game on the voters by going and annexing into this pre-existing fire protection district, and we know exactly what we're doing. Opposing a tax on our citizens, and we don't want to be the ones who did it. So by annexing, it's the county doing it through this fire protection district. And it's not true. We're doing it by our decision. I think voters have a right to speak to that. I really do. And I am just not comfortable with this whole strategy. We may get to the same place, and that's okay with me if that's what the voters want. But to be pushed down to the wire like this, making this kind of a decision, giving away everything we have in our fire equipment and facilities, that decision is made and gone forever, once it's approved by LAFCO.
Well, I don't think we're giving away our stuff, because we've already paid as citizens for that. That was one of the arguments that was brought, and I think Mr. Cox asked for a legal opinion to make sure if it was policy or law. That's still servicing the residents of the city of Victorville. It's not like we're giving it away.
Well, we're giving away...
We're not going to charge them again.
We're giving away local control of it.
So I disagree vehemently with what you've said. If you look at the city of San Bernardino City, they've already annexed. If you look at Needles, they've also done it. If you go to the January 18 LAFCO meeting that's going to be held by Kathy McDonald, you'll also see that Chino, Upland, and Loma Linda will be doing the same thing. I've actually spoken with Mayor, the city manager in Upland, too.
That doesn't make it right for Victorville.
Yeah, we're talking about Victorville.
We have our voters, we have...
I'm talking about Victorville and giving you other analogies and other places where you can go get your information as well. And we have differing opinions, and it's fine. So no need to attack anyone in particular opinions. We dissent, and it's okay.
Okay, that's enough.
It's not, I'm certainly not attacking anyone.
It's okay to do that. Be respectful, please.
You'll be respectful.
It does.
Not from the audience.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, can I protest, please? We have a public speaking protocol. We don't take discussion from the audience, so can we continue?
The, this is addressed to the council. We know that we absolutely have to do something. We know that we can go to the LAFCO procedure, and you have to protest it out. That's a different procedure than voting for it. We know that agencies throughout the state of California go through the protest, because it's not likely that it will be protested out. We know that 218, for certain taxes require two-thirds vote. Two-thirds are sometimes impossible to get. Quite frankly, I was under the opinion, and still am, that this could go to the voters on a majority vote. And I may be mistaken. We know that we have to do something, whether it's to continue to contract with the county, continue to contract with CalFire, to meet again with local agency. All across the country, they contract with private fire companies. We haven't looked at any of that. What we have looked at is basically, you have one week to adopt this, to go to LAFCO, or the sky's going to fall. The sky's not going to fall. If you look at our finances, we know we're going to run out of time, but we're not going to run out of time June 30, or March 30, or April 1, or September. I would find it almost impossible for me to tell the voters and property owners of this city, we're going to add $150 to every house, and oh, by the way, you can't call it a tax, because it's a fee, and oh, by the way, I'm not going to do it, I'm going to hand it to the county and LAFCO, therefore, I'm not raising the fee, but it's for fire protection for the city. That's skirting the issue, and I think we have to be absolutely honest, and we have to go to the voters and say, here's what's at stake. You're a good salesman. For two weeks, you've convinced me you're a good salesman. And if you can be a good salesman, and I think the city council would even join, as long as the people are voting on that, they can make a decision. Do you want an assessment on your property, and we continue the ownership on the decisions and contract, or do you want to turn it over to the county? Let the people decide. Now, dangers in that, because there may not be anyone who would turn out, and it may be that they would both fail. But then if it does, we know that we have no choice but to go to LAFCO and do exactly what you're advocating. Well, it's not lost, and the sky doesn't fall after all, but I'm not, I cannot possibly vote for a $150 assessment. It's a tax, and we're raising it without the public having a right. I think the whole idea of 218 in the state legislature is when you raise the taxes, the public has the right to be heard. And I'm going to be an advocate that the public has a right to be heard.
We just reviewed the 2016 financial statements. The general fund had a $2 million surplus this last year, and we have an accumulated reserve of about two and a half mil, uh, four and a half million. We had a $2 million increase in property tax revenue this last year. We had a $4 million increase in sales tax revenues. I don't know that it's unrealistic to expect those kind of increases again. Be nice if we get them. If we get no increase, and we manage our spending, and we expect another $2 million surplus next year, we know both the police and fire contracts are going up, so chances are we won't see this surplus. All I'm saying is that our, we're not in desperate straits. We have options we can consider, we have choices we can make. We don't have to make this choice tonight. Look into this with greater care.
How long do we want to continue this till?
I want to continue. We have a, we have to make a decision on this tonight.
Your motion, or do you want to discuss it?
Pardon me, I've said everything.
Well, I think the public has the right to vote on it. I think that would be my motion. I don't know how to word that, and the legalese that the attorney would require, because I've got to figure it out, but to do this without having the public input. Does anybody ever realize that we're doing this, and there's no public hearing? It wasn't advertised as a public hearing. Come on. My motion is, is that, that we move forward with speed, knowing that we have to do something, and that staff take an opportunity to look at this again, to see what they can negotiate, but that we schedule this for an election, so the public can vote on this as soon as possible.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Abstain.
The motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no, and Councilmember Negretti abstaining.
I can move on to the next item. Item D7, adoption of the fiscal year 2017, 2018, 2021, 2022 consolidated plan priorities. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council adopt the priorities identified through the citizen participation process for the fiscal year 2017, 2018 through 2021, 2022 consolidated plan.
And question, we appointed two council members that sat on a committee to assist and help and make some decisions. Those two members, who are the two members of the council that sat on that? How to review?
This is actually something different, Jim. This is a, this is a new item. It's a five-year planning horizon for CDBG projects in general.
I know, but don't we have two council members that sat on a committee for CDBG grants and the allocation?
Eric Sonnet.
Yes.
Mayor Proton. Okay. Okay. So now, would, because this is regarding the planning and staff's going to be involved, are those same two members going to be involved in this process?
Andrea, is this one I have to recuse on? There's no proposal here to pay money to anybody.
No.
No, there is no proposal, so there's no financial impact.
Yeah. It might be helpful for our economic development director, Sophie Smith, to explain this item in comparison to the other item that you're referring to that'll come to the council at a later time.
Good evening. This item is twofold. One was to update the entire council, not just the committee, on the actions that have taken place since the council adopted the citizen participation plan in September of 2016. As we mentioned back then, it was the first step to start moving toward adopting and framing the next five-year consolidated plan. The two council members are going to sit on a committee that actually looks at the applications received and the dollars requested for the CDBG grants. This is for the larger plan. These are larger goals set forth in the plan, and the committee members will work with staff specifically on the dollar amounts for 16, for the upcoming fiscal year, the first year of the plan.
I just wanted the clarification. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Give me a moment. I'm not sure what agenda item we're on.
Sorry.
Uh, this is item D7.
Ready?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D8, French Health Insurance Employer Paid Contribution Survey. The recommendation is none.
Madam Mayor and council, I requested last June, when we were talking about the increased health cost. I'm sure that almost everyone is aware of what's going on at the federal level, or more importantly, what's not going on, what's actually going to happen with that health plan that they're talking about. That health plan primarily is different than what we have in the city. It covers people who don't have income, or underinsured, or not insured. In our case, we have traditionally, as other public agencies, and a lot of private agencies, if not most, provide insurance for the employee. Some employees let me know that their insurance cost went up. At that time, I had recommended that the city add at least, at least $100 a month to the employee's participation, because it was going up. We didn't do it for a lot of reasons, and continued it again mid-year. And what has happened now is the out-of-pocket cost for employee and family, just from July to December, is $142 more. Our employees, I guess it's three or, I don't know, I think it's, I think it's spouse, work, employee, spouse, and one child, or maybe it's two, but I think it's one. The city's paying 750, and the employee is paying $1,300. Now, I know several employees who want to go and buy their own, so they can buy it a lot cheaper. I don't know why ours is so expensive. I know at least one council member that dropped out and went and bought their own a lot cheaper. But if we're going to continue with this kind of a plan, where the employee, after the city of Victorville pays 750, that they have to pay $1,300 to cover their families, there's, there's something wrong with the plan. Now, I asked that staff attach the employee-paid contributions. It is there. City of Victorville is currently 750. VVWR is 750. It's, let me say right now, it's very unfair to look at that without looking at all the other benefits, because employees sometimes will trade benefits, because the age of the population, the number of dependents, whether, you know, they have different needs, and so they will give up holidays for more health and vice versa. But I'm just talking about the health.
Or the other spouse has coverage, and therefore, they don't need the coverage under the city.
the city. City of Barstow, the contribution to the employees is 1,000. Mojave Water Agency, 1,020. Town of Apple Valley pays 760, and then they match dollar for dollar for another $360. Mojave, Mojave Desert AQMD pays the employees the health portion, 1193. Now, but, by the way, this is health and dental, this is water and eyeglass. And City of Lancaster is 1,200 a month. City of Palmdale has an employee-paid cap, PPO Plan Premium, 1,946. The city pays, the employees capped at 250, and the city pays 1696. Some of our employees have a $2,000 a month health package, which is, needs to be looked at, but if we're not going to look at it, well, we need to look at it, but we also need to increase that amount. I make the proposal, I am for it. In fact, I don't think the 100 is enough, I think it has to be the 140, it's 229. In budget time, we're going to talk about this again, and heaven's to bidsey, I hope that somebody at the federal level gets a hand on this health issue and gets it under control, because it won't be long that we can't afford it.
Mr. Cox, I'm going to tell you right now, if we don't do that proposal in two years, we can pay for a fire engine. So, you're not getting any vote from me on that one.
Well, I'm going to cover the employees first.
They lose, but...
Well, I understand, I understand. All have difference of opinions, but I requested that this be put on the council agenda. By the way, if we reduce it by 100 a month, we can buy another fire engine, if that's the issue. All the employees, but we'll have a good fire engine. That's the proposal. Animal increase for the city employees. They don't have the insurance, we cap them at 250. Recommend that stay in place.
Problem is, I will restate it, our employees have benefits that are far in excess of what our average resident has. When we increase those benefits, our residents aren't paying for it.
So, we're careful about not increasing the fee, which is not a tax, but yet we increased this.
Up, it, we've, we often have difference of opinions, and that's, I respect those. I simply believe that we are at the very low end, and our employees deserve more. That's why I made the recommendation. I make the motion to increase it by 100 a month, there's no second. I understand that, but I make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, oh. The motion is what?
Increase the city's portion for the health benefit, which includes eye, dental, eyeglass, and health insurance for 100 a month per employee.
No.
Now, effective, effective, so that it can be put together, which is 30 to 45 days.
At the last meeting in December, I apologize, this is something we had intended to bring forward last December and didn't. One of the comments that I made was if it's the council's direction, we can implement this effective January 1st. It would result in a fairly modest, but slight back pay situation for the employees. If the council's direction, that was, the intent was to have it considered before January 1st, I don't want to put a vote in your heads one way or the other, I'm just saying, we can implement it July 1st, February 1st, back to January 1st, whatever the council gives us direction to do.
Motion then would be, unless it's going to cause a problem, February 1st, or as soon as reasonably possible without causing hardship on administration to put it into effect.
There's...
Sure, are we able to?
I have a motion and a second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No. Abstain.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy voting no, and Mr. Negretti abstaining.
And whether we like it or not, we need to look at this again during the budget process because the outlandish cost that health insurance is charging everyone. Out of control. Thank you.
Okay, so we move on to item E, public comments. And I do have several cards. The first one is Clayton Moore, and after him is Norm Miller.
Mayor, council members, my name is Norm Miller, and I guess I'm back here again. I'm still unhappy with the bridge and intersection there with Mariposa and Armigosa. Part of the problem is that people are stopping in the middle of the intersection, you can't get through. The other part of the problem is I don't think the signals are coordinated quite right, because I was there the other day, and the signal on the bridge turned red, and the signal on Mariposa turned green. And that's not, to me, the way you get traffic flow. So, maybe the city, I know the city can't do anything about the bridge signals, but maybe it could check a little bit about coordinating the street signals to go with the bridge a little bit, because it does it in every direction. And it's just, maybe it's just the way Victorville is, not that I'm complaining about it, but we got a bad intersection there, and I don't know if they went through trying to fix it one time, and they couldn't come up with anything. So, anyway, that's one thing. The other thing is, this was on the agenda once before, and I'd like to see if you can put it up there again. I think it would be a lot better for the people of Victorville if they could do their public comments before the meeting instead of after the meeting, because we've waited here, what, two some hours, so I could speak. And I could have said this in the very beginning, have it over with, and then listen to what you guys have to say, but I just think it'd be nice if we could have the public comment early in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Norm Miller. And after Norm, it's John Almano. Uh, Norm Miller, is he here?
Norm just spoke. Norm just spoke.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Clayton, Clayton Moore.
Uh, John Almano.
Joanna, let me see the card. Joanna Almano?
Oh, John, no. Or is that?
Good evening. My name is Joanne Alman. There's a few things, oh, you put the light on already. There's a few things I have here, I'm not here very often.
Restart the timer, Carol.
My husband is very ill, he has cancer. But my main reason was Bear Valley Road. From Stater Brothers to where the road is great, to 395, we've got gouges in there. You could probably put a baby in a few of them. There's them that are very long, if you have a motorcycle, you can get stuck in there, and my son does ride a motorcycle, but he gets in the turn lane, because that's the only one that's nice. When it's raining, you have sand all the way across the street, so you have to get in the left turn lane and right, to go down Bear Valley. There was a few other things I wanted to say, but boy, I'll tell you what, you guys, I give you credit. The only bad thing, we can't hear you back there, and I really do miss seeing the vote up there. Who voted what? I think the people in this room, when we're sitting here, and can't hear you, at least when you vote, we could see it on the screen. That I miss, and I know that's Carol Lee's got to do that. One other thing was, can't think now, I waited too long. Oh, there was another thing. I think public comment should be put back on the front of the agenda. People come here from work, maybe they have kids at home. I sat there, it's now 8 o'clock or a little after, from 5:30, I got here so I can get a seat, until now. My husband's probably yelling his head off for dinner. So, I just think really public comment belongs up in the front, so people can come up and speak. I think that was it, but it sure has changed. The faces up there, there's a lot of gray hair. That wasn't gray when I left. Hi. No.
You may have contributed to some of that gray hair.
Yeah. No, but I think every one of us that have, that makes us a little older, but smarter in a lot of ways. But I think you guys do a great job, but it's, it's hard to hear, very hard, and I miss all of you. Anyway, that's it, thank you. Now I can go home.
Thank you, thank you very much. After Dorothy will be Alex Gonzalez. I don't have a problem with that name.
Boy, that's a good one to follow, isn't it? I have a few problems that's going on. We need to do some roadwork. We're always redoing Old Town. It's been done, I know, three times, and it still looks as bad as it did. They, you hire all these people to come in and give you all the way to do it, it's not getting anywhere. Let's start taking care of the rest of the city. I mean, the mall, all that, the roads over there, from 395 coming towards the mall, is a disaster, and so is Sycamore. As a matter of fact, they're out here, they're sticking somewhere mud in the potholes instead of taking care of the whole thing. I mean, it's, it's just getting completely out of control. Everything's down, down in Old Town, and people that live up in the upper part of the city gets nothing. And I really wanted to bring that out, and I think we should move the public comment up to the front, so that you don't have to sit here all night waiting to speak your mind, and there's a lot of people, don't even come anymore, because they don't want to sit all night. So, we need to start thinking about the people. You're representing the people, take care of the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Maggie Martin.
Dorothy, don't leave yet, just sit down, Dorothy. Sit down, don't leave. Joanne, don't leave. We get to comment.
Good evening, council. Um, whoa. I had a pre-thought-out thing I was going to talk about, but I've kind of diverted. First of all, I would like to personally welcome our new police captain, Captain John Schuler. I think he might know that I'm a very big fan of Captain Lucia, extreme admiration and respect for him, and he has become a good, what I would consider friend and confidant for my need. And I just want to welcome you, but also let you know you have very, very large boots to fill. I'm sure you can, but we will get to know each other, trust me, it'll just be a matter of time that I'll become knocking on the door. So, again, wel- welcome, sir. The other thing that I saw here tonight that very distressed me, I mean, I am very distressed. This is supposed to be a professional business meeting, and I saw some very unprofessional conduct right here at this meeting. And I feel like, which is why I spoke out, I'm still feeling a little red, a little heated about it, but I don't think bickering, backbiting, snipping, whatever you want to call it, at one another from the dais speaks well of the people that are engaging in that. I would suggest they keep that kind of behavior amongst themselves and behind closed doors. And when you are new in any job, generally, it's a good policy to listen more than speak, because we learn more that way about how the ropes of the job are done. And even though a person can be, when they're new, they can be the most educated person in the room with the absolute best solutions or ideas, but it's not going to come across well when, if it's not presented calmly and professionally. So, I would suggest that maybe some polishing of their softer skills might be in order. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe Alex Gonzalez must have left, he's not coming forward.
Madam Mayor, at the beginning, you mentioned both Clayton Moore and Norm Miller, and I know Clayton hasn't spoken, I don't know if he intended to or not. Okay, thank you.
Just real quickly, and then, and then Joanne can leave and Dorothy can leave. We used to start our meeting at 7:00. Public comment started at 7:15, and frequently ran until 8:00. So, all the people who had business to deal with the city waited until 8:00, and they got their item up by 8:30 or 9:00. We moved the meeting to 6:00. Probably nine out of 10 meetings in the last four years, public comment starts by 7:00. Tonight was very unusual, because we had all this other stuff. But we're normally getting public comments started about the same time as it used to be. That's my only point, go home and say hello to Bob and go have dinner.
Madam Mayor, I want to make one comment. I have a very soft...
Excuse Dorothy.
I have a very soft voice, and when I'm reminded that the audience can't hear me, I stick the microphone in my mouth and it makes a difference, but please, if anyone can't hear me, or any member of the council, let somebody know, because we can get closer to the microphone, and it makes all the difference in the world. But when we're talking here, especially with a soft voice, I simply fade away, and I realize that, and I have to be reminded, my apologies, but just give me a high sign, anyone, anywhere, staff, whatever, and I'll correct it, and thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Okay, now we have reports from our city manager.
Steph has no additional comments at this time.
Very well. Reports from council members, and I'll start over here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to welcome Police Chief Schuler as well. I'd like to let you know this is not typical. I've been on the council for two years, and I really enjoyed working with Sam, and I think it's, it's a great relationship that we have there. Last year was, was terrible, we had fires and all kinds of mayhem going on, family members stranded down the hill, you know, and we're all affected the same in the community. So, we appreciate everything that the Fire Department, Chief Muncy, and, and our Police Department does, and we have a great leadership group up here in the desert, and happy to have you aboard. Having said that, I would like to men, uh, talk about our new council member. Over the last month or so, we've been called as a council corrupt, we've been called bought and paid for, we've been called, uh, many things. When Councilmember Gomez went to Rialto, she was called corrupt, and many people were confused and thought the rest of the city council supported whatever it is she was supporting, and called us corrupt. We were told from the very beginning in the first meeting that she spends more time in the community than all four of us put together. That is inappropriate. This is a professional business meeting. There is decorum here, and I would never say some of the things you've said. Today, you reminded your colleagues that the planning commissioner position is a layperson requirement. You talked about other cities, well, we are here for the business of the city of Victorville. But then you also said, well, that's where you can find your information. Now, I don't plan to be lectured and condescended by one of my colleagues, and so I'm cautioning you that this is, this is not how we do things.
Thank you.
I have no comments. Thank you.
I do have comments. So I heard on December 20th, Ms. Garcia, Mayor Garcia, went ahead and said if there is any kind of changes that you wanted to the agenda, to please bring them to the attention. And you have, a lot of people have spoken and said you want your public comments to be up towards the front of the agenda in the beginning. So I'm glad that you guys took that advice and have let us know that that's what, something that you consider. Another thing is, when you can't hear, I don't know if there's volume to this, or maybe import some, a few funds to make something that you guys can hear better. I don't know. I'm close enough, I think. Hopefully, people in the back can hear me. And so thank you for bringing up that for the, to the agenda. And whenever I go to any cities, I represent myself. I don't represent the council here. So for Mr. Negretti to say that I was representing him, I wasn't representing you or anybody else in this venue, is just myself. Everything that you hear, if you don't hear it straight from me, please ask me. Behind closed doors, I'm willing to share my opinion and probably put a lot of that fuel out because I know there's a few things that were said from someone else that you heard because I haven't spoken to you personally, and my intent is never to offend you. And if I ever offend you, please come to me. And like some people were saying up here, please, let's not treat the dais. So I, I get it. I understand that. So that would be the same for my colleagues. So if you have an issue or something, bring it behind closed doors. That's the best way that we can operate. And it's really difficult to communicate with my council members because of the Brown Act. And so I'm starting to realize that. So if we need to have a closed session, put on, on the agenda for the future so that we can have this discussion and all of us be there, I would ask that that be done so that we address it behind closed doors, and we don't have to bring it out here. Because we all have differences, and that's really clear.
Unfortunately, you probably can't have that type of discussion in a closed session setting only because, again, it would be a Brown Act violation. Very limited, very limited reasons to go in a closed session.
So if there's another way to do that, I'm sure someone can come up with it, whether it's a blind copy of an email or something like that. That would be also something that can be to measure up what it is that we can do.
You could have discussions individually with, you know, one different council member, so long as it's not, you're not trying to build any consensus, or that, that'd probably be the way to approach it. Or it could be a discussion of this, you know, on the council dais at this, at this level in public.
Okay, so then, if that's how we're going to choose to do business, then so be it. We're going to do business open in the public and be transparent. And when you see our votes, the votes are going to come out as we feel. So I'm glad that we got that settled, and we know that we're going to be very transparent in front of the dais. The other thing that I wanted also to bring up with my remarks is, I went to San Diego. Yes, I go to a lot of cities to get a lot of information. I just don't stay in my own city. I'm one person to learn from different divisions. I was in San Diego for two days straight, forty-eight hours, San Diego. This is the council remarks.
Again, you're speaking about issues that have nothing to do with our city.
Councilmember comments should be restricted to information that's within the subject matter of the city of Victorville, so...
So you don't want me to contextualize what I'm going to say? Is that what I hear?
Saying if it, if it relates to the business and the dealings of the city of Victorville, it needs to be put in that context, yes.
It does. And that is what I am doing. So thank you for letting me know that that's where I'm headed, because that's exactly where I'm headed. So like I was saying, I was in San Diego at the San Diego Housing Commission.
Madam Mayor, may I be excused?
And I also went to Second Chance.
May I be excused?
And I went to Father John Village. And I realized that the homelessness that we have here in the city of Victorville, we could learn a lot about what is happening in other cities. So I was thinking that we can probably start implementing something in the city of Victorville to house our homeless, or to create a task force, something that we can do to help them out. And a lot of people have been talking in that regard. So homelessness is a big issue, and I'd like to see if we can put that on the agenda in the future and see how we can help our homeless in the city of Victorville.
This meeting is adjourned.